Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
All right, would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the March 31st Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Laurie has the dog today. Wait till you see this little puppy.
It's a great dog.
Paws.
Lucky, I got a cute one. We have a purebred black lab. What did you say, web feet? Very sweet.
Look at the tail.
He wants to go home with me. So come on down to our dog kennel. And I think what I need to stress the most is when you're looking for a pet, come down to our dog kennel first before you go anywhere else. We have a lot of dogs to pick from and they are all very sweet and need a good home, so come on down. I'm sure there's going to be a lottery for this one Saturday at 3 o'clock. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelo has the first proclamation.
Is Melissa here?
Yes, she is. Melissa's here.
Oh, there you are. I couldn't see you behind David. Want to come on up?
Good morning.
Yeah, right at the microphone. We're going to let you talk to Melissa after we do your proclamation. Good morning.
Good morning.
In the matter of recognizing national child abuse prevention and awareness for the month of April 2010 in Lorraine County, Ohio, whereas across the country, April is recognized as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. State and local agencies and concerned citizens all work toward the common purpose of preventing child abuse by delivering a powerful collective message about the importance of protecting children and supporting families. Whereas Lorraine County understands that when the well-being of children and families becomes a priority of everyone in the community, the number of child abuse and neglect incidences will decrease. And whereas the national campaign Pin Wheels for Prevention, It's Your Turn to Raise the Leaders of Tomorrow incorporates a symbol for prevention, the pinwheel, which we've all got up here, three of us have our little pinwheels up here. This campaign reminds us that it takes a village to keep children free from abuse and neglect, and everyone has a role to play. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners that we hereby recognize national child abuse prevention and awareness for the month of April 2010 in Lorraine County and encourage all citizens to join this effort to ensure every child has a chance for a safe and positive future, free from abuse and neglect. Lorraine County Commissioners, Betty Blair, President, Ted Kelo, and Laurie Kokowski. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. Just a quick word, the pinwheels were supplied to us from the Ohio Children's Trust Fund and just to give you a quick overview of the Ohio Children's Trust Fund, that's our funding authority for our department and they provide dollars to us locally to support child abuse prevention activities. This year, they partnered with Pin Wheels for Prevention and so you have a string of pinwheels available. We actually have over 2,000 pinwheels in my department awaiting distribution. We're delivering those in lots of 100 with two signs that you see here. But that 2,000 equates to about how many reports of abuse and neglect that our county receives annually? And out of those 2,300 reports last year of abuse and neglect, we actually had about 800 substantiated cases through Children's Services. So it's an important matter in our county. We've seen about 100% increase in child abuse since 2001. It's on a steady increase. It hasn't wavered. It hasn't leveled off. So it's something that the state feels very important and so they've given pinwheels to every county in the state of Ohio, so hopefully in your travels, you'll see pinwheels. In our county, we have about 25 to 30 locations that will be displaying those, so if anyone in the room would like to bring those back to your offices, feel free to contact me and we'll get those delivered to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa Stefano. Appreciate your being here today.
Thanks.
You want to pick up your proclamation? We want you to have it. Okay, and the next one is a proclamation for Yvonne Newton. You all want to come up to the microphone, Yvonne? She is so happy today.
She's paroled.
In the matter of expressing our best wishes to Yvonne Newton on her retirement from the Lorraine County Commissioners' office. Whereas Yvonne Newton began her employment in Lorraine County SEDA in 1979. And whereas Yvonne had several promotions on February 9th, 1981, as intake technician and December 30th, 1983, as typist. And whereas county commissioners hired her on February 2nd, 1986, as administrative secretary to George Corey. And it doesn't say here why, but I know why.
Yes.
Why?
I don't know, I might, I don't think I do.
Share the same level, Margaret.
Yes.
He went down the line, he was who's here from Admiral King, and Yvonne said she was, and so she was hired. And whereas in 1991, Yvonne became a purchasing specialist and was promoted on August 4th, 1994, to purchasing coordinator and will retire as purchasing director. And whereas we are recognizing Yvonne for 30 years and four months of service with the county. And whereas Yvonne was a member and served as treasurer for the County Purchasing Association. And whereas her good fellowship and congenial sense of humor with working associates has been enjoyable. Whereas Yvonne is a caring, very cooperative, dependable worker who will pitch in wherever help was needed and all her untiring efforts, dedication, and humanitarian kindness will be remembered. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners expresses appreciation to Yvonne Newton for services rendered to the county and its citizens. Further be it resolved, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and staff wish for Yvonne, her husband Gregory, and son Gregory G., a very healthy, peaceful retirement as she pursues her hobbies and interests for many years to come. This is signed today, March 31st. Betty Blair, Ted Kelo, and Laurie Kokowski. Would you like to say something?
I can't say anything.
Oh.
Well, then stay!
And there are not too many people left who have more seniority than I now, Yvonne.
I know. Just thank you. It's truly been a blessing.
There's a nice cake there with your name on it and I think we're supposed to cut it from 11 to 12.
And this food that people brought in, smells so good.
You might know that Laurie was checking it out already.
Oh yeah, we looked at the lids and seen what was in all the crock pots.
Okay, well, all right, now I guess we get down to the real stuff. Go ahead, Janice.
Job and family bills, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
And Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of highs to talk about with the board, potential highs, excuse me, at Golden Acres, our ongoing labor negotiations, and I will need a little bit of guidance from you on. Both those topics are allowable under the sunshine law, and I'd like to do so in an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the same for the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes of March 24, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Approve annual county general fund appropriation for fiscal year 10.
Mr. Cordez?
Yes, ma'am.
You going to talk about it or is Lisa?
Well, I can if you'd like. I sent you all the commissioners some, an email and Ms. Hobart forwarded some financial documentation. This is just a clarification of what we did earlier in the year, actually last year in December. We did a quarter, quarterly allocation to see exactly where the revenues and expenses would start out. We did a similar thing for fiscal year 2009 and we have to pass the permanent appropriation by the end of March. So this is more housekeeping. The revenues have looked pretty steady with regard to projections, sales tax is slightly down. The positive side is while they're still down, they're down less than they were down as a percentage last year. I consider that a very positive sign. I wish they were up. I wish they were bringing in as much money, but if we're slowing the tide, sooner or later it's going to go the other way. So I'm satisfied that the appropriation that was passed in December is sufficient enough to at least carry us another several months into the year. We need to take a look at this again in the summertime to make sure that we're on projection. So this is more housekeeping and format than there's anything that needs to be changed.
For the benefit of anybody who might be watching, at least we could detail what the total is.
I have those numbers if you want me to read them from the Budget Department. General Fund, $48,935,716.86. That's the second quarter salary in PERS that's being allocated today. Criminal Justice, $6,809,000. There were 3% cuts to salary and PERS in the following departments, Commissioners, all of our departments, the Auditor, Common Pleas Court, Domestic Relations Court, Probate Court, and the Board of Elections. Additional cuts that were made were the Lorraine County Community Alliance in the amount of $25,000. Lorraine County Transit cut $400,000. The Lorraine County Airport cut $175,000. The Lorraine County Airport matching grants in the amount of $20,000. We cut Glide $125,000. Our Main Street grants for the various cities throughout the county totaled $75,000. Team Lorraine County was cut $25,000. Ohio State University was cut $156,600. Soil and Water was cut $49,000. And Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce was cut $25,000. So the total cuts to outside agencies were $1,075,600. And then also, which helped a little bit this year, and our engineer Ken Carney and Mark Stewart worked out a takeover for the tax map under the real estate assessment, which will save the general fund approximately $350,000 a year. So that, that helped out a lot. And I want to thank, Mr. Carney's here and I thank him for that, and Mark Stewart.
Commissioner, those cuts were on top of the cuts that were made permanent with the failure of the sales tax increase in November, which were several millions of dollars, which were temporary cuts that the board initiated and made permanent after we didn't achieve success of getting additional revenues. So for those out there, just a little bit of memory jock for those out there, that million plus was on top of several millions of dollars and every-
It was almost $7 million of cuts originally?
Yes, ma'am. And that everything has been flatlined, that wasn't cut was flatlined and nothing has been increased in the last three years, while we all know that inflationary costs and things have been going up. Sometimes people go, "Why aren't you cutting more?" Well, things are getting more expensive and we're not increasing them. Some places we just can't cut. So either they've been cut or frozen on top of all the things we've done, we've done before.
And out of those salary and PRS cuts, nothing was cut at the Sheriff's Department, so you know-
Or the jail.
Or the jail. Okay.
Thank you. So the total general fund and criminal justice that you just alluded to is $55,744,716.86. Any other comments, Commissioners?
Well, today's the last day of sales tax. It'll be collected at 6 and 3/4%. It goes down to 6.25 tomorrow and let's see how we fare for the rest of the year.
Okay. I'll move for approval of the annual county general fund appropriation as detailed by the Budget Department.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Okay, under Children and Families Council, amend Resolution 09-261, adopted April 16th of '09, approving children's trust fund contracts reallocations for fiscal year 10. Said amendment is to reflect effective July 1, 2009, through June 30, 2010, for the following. Catholic Charities Service Corporation, Parents as Teachers Program from $20,814.33 to $16,614.33. And Blessing House from $23,433 to $27,633.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, accept recommendation of Tax Incentive Review Council and approve report, which includes review of 21 tax abatement agreements and recommendation to continue 19 for another year, acknowledge expiration of two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve and enter into a renewal agreement with Maximus of Concord Township, Ohio, in the amount of $3,500 to update the space report to be paid from account of professional services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste Management District, fund request for six computers to Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and the Veteran Services to be used for unemployed veterans.
Dan Bealman, Solid Waste Director for the Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Dan.
A little bit about the veterans. They're, they are trying to give their, some of their veterans one up on getting jobs and they need the internet to do it, need computers. It's, it's a good, good program that they have. You have given out a total of 65 already this year refurbished computers, which that's really good. And we're over 360 since we started the program, so it's helping quite a few people. I have Doug Brans, Doug Bankston here to give you a few words, but I would totally recommend that we do this.
Thank you, Dan.
So these computers will stay at Veteran Services? You're not giving them to veterans to take home or?
They will be in their homes, yes.
Oh, they will take them home?
Yeah, that's pretty much, we don't normally allow it, but because of the, the nature of the program, it's better for them to have it there. So, and they will totally keep track of them. They've assured us of that, so that's a good thing.
Thank you, Dan.
Doug?
Good morning.
Good morning, Doug. Good morning, all. I'm Doug Bankston from the Lorraine County Veteran Service Office. I was tasked with, by my boss, to come here and convince you guys that we're worthy of receiving some donated computers. And first of all, most of you up here know what we do at the Lorraine County Veteran Service Office, but for anyone else in the room or anyone watching this, a really quick rundown is our office provides financial assistance, assistance in filing VA medical claims, and various other services to over 20,000 veterans in Lorraine County. One of these happens to be financial assistance. Now, what we'd like to do is we would like to expand our services to our veterans that are in need by providing the low-income needy veterans a donated computer to be used to help them find a job, type a resume, and learn how to use a computer. We have veterans coming in with all kinds of different issues. Some of them are older, some of them are younger, some of them are, have injuries they've gotten from Korean War, Vietnam. We got young guys coming in just out of Iraq, but they all have one thing in common. Number one, they're a veteran. Number two, they're, they're down on their luck. Some of them are living in shelters, some of them are living with family members, but most of them do not have access to a computer, which, and, which makes their situation even worse because they don't have a job and they're trying to find a job, so now they're having to bear the expense of driving somewhere where there's a computer, the library or our office on North Ridge Road. Now, we've identified a source of donated computers to Mr. Bealman and through him, I've applied to receive, we've applied to receive six, I think, the first batch. Now, if you approve this, our often intends to do, our office intends to do three things. Number one, we're going to provide these older refurbished donated computers only to veterans who demonstrate a need, to financial need and all that, to have one. We will accomplish this through a board held periodically, probably every other week, and in other words, we will present to the Veteran Service Commission the name of the individual, their financial situation, and all that, and they will decide who is worthy of getting a computer. Number three, prior to being donated, these computers will be stored at the Lorraine County Veteran Service Office. They'll be strictly accounted for until they're donated. Once they're donated, a complete record of the date the computer was donated, the serial number, and the name and the address of the veteran receiving the computer will be kept on file at the Veteran Service Office. And one more thing is if this is approved, our next step, which I've been tasked to, tasked with, is to work with some of our local ISPs, internet service providers, to try to get some of these veterans a reduced rate monthly internet service, so they can find a job. Maybe tack a couple dollars on their phone bill, whatever it takes, to try to get these people some internet access. And also, we're going to provide one-on-one computer training to these veterans. Some of them don't know how to use a computer. Some of them never had one. And we're going to do this in our office. It's going to be one-on-one and we're going to, we're going to train these guys, these veterans, old men and women, how to use a computer. So I hope you guys can consider us and give us some of these donated computers to provide to the veterans. Now, on a side note, I hadn't typed this in, this is just from me personally. I was thinking on the way over, well, you know what? What if they ask me, "Well, what if a guy takes a computer and runs off to the, to the pawn shop, sells it for $20 and goes to the bar?" Can I stop that? No. I mean, the whole thing about donated computers, the county donates computers to schools, townships, and what have you. You don't know what happens when they leave. There's a little trust involved. So at our office, we're going to try to, as best we can, make sure that these people are above board, that they're really looking for a job, they're already coming in looking for a job, they need a computer. We're going to do the best we can to ensure that the people that get the computers are going to use them for what they're going to, what they're supposed to be used for. Okay?
Thank you, Doug.
Are there any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I move for approval.
Second. Oh, sorry, wasn't being-
Okay.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Okay.
Done, thank you. Good luck.
Extend the contract with RET3 Job Corp. Incorporated of Cleveland for e-scrap recycling services for the year 2010 to be paid from account of e-scrap recycling services.
Now, there are three contracts here dealing with the new recycling center. You wish to address that?
Well, they don't particularly deal with the, the center, the new center that we're working on. Their renewals of existing contracts that we did RFPs for a while back and we're allowed to extend those contracts for an additional year. How we're going to incorporate those service providers with respect to what we'll be doing at the recycling center hasn't been fully vetted yet, but we will be using them. It was thought that it was much more efficient to, than to start a whole new round of RFPs and try to select additional vendors when these folks have done a good job. I think they're in the third year, this is the third year of the contract, Mr. Bealman, so after this year, we have to do an RFP with them.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Extend the contract with Fluorescent Recycling Incorporated of Beechwood for fluorescent lamp and ballast recycling services for the year 2010 to be paid from the account of district's fluorescent lighting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Extend the contract with Liberty Tire Services of Ohio LLC in Minerva for scrap tire recycling services for the year 2010 to be paid from the account of tires and open dump.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I can't wait for this. I've been seeing tires everywhere. Not really, I mean, everywhere I go, I'm seeing tires on the side of the road. It's really, it's like a big pet peeve of mine anyways, is littering, but tires, come on.
Well, you're going to see them at your collection center hopefully real soon.
Hopefully, yeah.
So you're going to have, you're going to own your own stock of tires, Commissioner.
Yay! Yeah, okay. Make rubber mats out of them or something, I don't know. Welcome, mats. I see a lot of that.
Pellets for playgrounds.
Yeah, pellets for playgrounds, there we go. Find something to do with them, tires.
Any more discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I have two pressing issues this morning I'd like the board to take under consideration. And actually, it's one, but there's two separate elements to it. As you know, we've struggled with our Project 10 Incumbent Worker Training Program over the last several months with some repeal of waivers that were granted to the state when we tackled the difficult issue of matching funds and wages and things with companies with DOL about 18 months ago. We were successful at setting the trend with those funds. Changes at DOL came thereafter. We were running a very successful program and never underestimate the fact that successful programs will be changed by somebody way up the line that doesn't realize the good work being done at a much lower level. When, when they went through all their waivers, they denied the waiver for Project 10 for incumbent worker training and redefined the use of funds to be used for layoff aversion, specifically not for incumbent worker training. Well, interesting, some of the definitions of layoff aversion could be easily incorporated into incumbent worker training, depending on how you massage the various methodologies you use to, to review the necessity of the, of the training. But after that, we never really received any specific guidance from the state with respect to the new definitions from DOL and the state is the one that lets us use those funds or orders our funds for recovery if they're not used appropriately at the local level. We've been working as a group diligently through the earlier part of this year to get a couple of companies queued up, establish what we thought layoff aversion meant, so that we could push the state to provide that guidance at a Columbus. While we were doing that, and we were proposed to come to this board next week, the state issued some guidance last week. Of course, we were working with them, but I didn't expect that guidance that quick and their definitions of layoff aversion pretty well mirrored what we were thinking those definitions would be and how we were establishing them locally, so we were able So we were able to queue two companies for training very rapidly. One of them would like to start some training as of yesterday, because the training is starting, the program is starting with regard to the coursework. So I want to move these to you today and have Don come up and make an explanation of those companies and get this project back on the fast track because it produced so much good work in Lorraine County, and I'm pleased that we are seemingly now moving ahead again after we, you know, kind of tried to wiggle around all those changes at, at the federal level. So with that, I think Don is here to present two opportunities for us.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. As Mr. Cordez mentioned, we do have two companies that we did queue up very quickly, both of whom meet the definition of the layoff aversion piece very well. The first is RW Beckett Corporation in North Ridgeville. They are coming to us for training in areas around shop math and electrical applications, circuitry, basic electronics, electronics, to evolve a new product line that they're working on to expand out from their oil burner business into some other areas and new controls. They are requesting approximately $27,005.88 in Project 10 funds. The grand total cost of the project is $60,311.76 for this. They have actually probably the best example of what a layoff aversion application should look like and will probably be used as the model for any future companies coming forward through this process. The other company we have that is requesting funds is Western Enterprises out of Avon Lake. They are requesting funding for statistical process control training, which is a quality control. They have some business opportunities that they are looking to get into where they have to have a very tight quality control level, even higher than their current outstanding quality control levels are, so they need to implement this new process to be able to effectively bid on those, increase those opportunities, and bring in some additional business that they don't yet have. They are requesting $4,245 in Project 10 funds, total cost of the project being $13,861.8. And they also have a very good application when it comes to the layoff aversion piece, and both of these will be probably used as the gauges and measures for any other companies coming to us for these funds.
Commissioners, as I indicated, we didn't agenda this item because we, the leadership team was going to review these projects, obviously, and we, they did approve them, but before, we were going to move them to the state to make sure that the state was agreeable to setting the tempo with that aversion definition so that there'd be no recovery later. Had we just gone ahead and done it locally and found that the state disagreed with our interpretation of layoff aversion, and there was an audit finding, we would have had to make up the money out of our general fund. So we felt it was prudent to engage them on a different level. I think we're very comfortable that the interpretations that were established and sent down to us clearly fit the definition of these companies, and I see Don is indicating that in the affirmative.
Yes.
And the, the, the other piece is that we had two pools of money, we had dislocated worker money, and we had adult funds. One of the other pieces of guidance that, that we received from DOL, which was a change, is that in order to use the adult worker funds, they now have to meet the low-income threshold.
Yes.
Of, of eligibility. That's, that's unfortunate. These are all dislocated worker dollars. The reason I said the other pool is unfortunate that they have to meet that eligibility because it's very hard to work with companies to establish whether their workers are eligible under the poverty guidelines. You start making those kind of intrusions into the workplace, it becomes very difficult to, to get compliance with that, and a lot of times, companies don't want to disrupt their workforce and they just walk away.
You end up being like DFAST does.
Well, yes, it, it, but we're going to face that challenge because we only have a limited amount of dislocated worker money. We used to have 20% that we could use for this program out of our, out of our dislocated adult worker funds, now we're down to 10%. That was another change that came out of DOL. So we're down to 10%, and then that pool has been split with 10% of that, with 50% of that money having to be eligible, poverty-eligible.
Correct.
Recipients. We're trying to work on protocols now that will be very, well, let's put it this way, least intrusive, that we can try to engage the employees with, otherwise, we're going to exhaust our availability of resources pretty rapidly with these companies out there. So I just wanted you to be aware of some of those challenges and changes that, that are happening. We'll continue to try to be at the front of these things. Best of my knowledge, we're the first one using these funds to combat what they're calling now layoff aversion in the state of Ohio.
To my knowledge, with a program such as ours, we would be the, the first one. There may have been another one-stop who did something with their formula dollars, but no one using an innovative program like Project 10 has gone to challenge and move forward with the new definitions like we have.
Well, I mean, we're benefiting two longstanding companies in our community with a lot of employees. Now, does this fall under our job retention then numbers? Is that how they're going to rate this?
Well, we should, because, you know, clearly, there has to be some indication that without, without the use of these funds, the company is in jeopardy of a reduction in force. So I would clearly call these retention numbers.
Okay, is that how they're going to classify it? The state though, Don, I mean, did they come out with rules on that classification of using these dollars as to what these people actually become?
When it, when it comes to the incumbent worker training, the layoff aversion falls under the retention category because they're attempting to lay off, they're attempting to avert that, yes.
Other questions? Okay, now, do we need a separate motion for each?
Uh, that, that would actually make it a little easier, but it's up to the board.
Well, we'll do what needs to be done. One separate.
I think one resolution approving both contracts and the resolution be fine.
Okay, also move.
Second.
Just authorize the county administrator to sign, and I'll take care of it.
And authorizing the county administrator to sign as well.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Thank you.
And Jim?
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for taking that issue so, so quickly to task. I'm sure the company's going to be grateful that they can get their employees right into that training, otherwise, we'd have to wait another whole quarter. Just another, you know, reason why, you know, the board should be, you know, loaded for their quick response to these companies out here. We're moving as fast as we can to bring them dollars and, and help them through these times. I don't have any further reports this morning, thank you.
Jerry?
Commissioner, I have two issues of pending litigation that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session.
I have a question for you, Jerry. Can you just refresh us on the allied waste issue we authorized?
Right, we have, we're proceeding to the last step, which means we have to send out notices to the local political subdivisions and local generators, and we asked them to submit comments, we're giving them a two-week period to do that, and this would probably be ready for final consideration. I think the meeting would be April 21st.
Thank you very much.
Ken Carney is here with Brian McCartney for presentation. Good morning.
Good morning, Ken.
Thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to explain a program that we've been working with extensively within the last six months, coinciding with a, implementing a resolution that was passed in November of '09. I have Brian McCartney with KEM and Associates today to help explain the stormwater management program that we foresee implementing under the guidance of the resolution that was passed last year. You may see some activity going on presently with a grant that was applicable to a use from PSI or in community college, doing approximately the same concept, only we're dealing with the unincorporated areas where PSI will be incorporating the municipalities and villages, and hopefully, at some point in time, we'll all join together, implementing a countywide plan that all municipalities, villages, and counties, meaning the townships, would participate in a countywide program. However, you may recall that Lake County is implementing theirs, and you may have gone to the seminar at the college, we had two speakers, one was Lake County, and they have a very excellent program, it's running very smoothly, and the strength behind that is, it's voluntary. It really, really, quite honestly, works very well. John Gilz and I are, John, if you remember, Mr. Kalo, and Betty and Lori, they're, he's on the board of, governing board of Nawaka, and we have an opportunity to meet quite often. He's quite proud of it, and he had a very good presentation. We'd like to dovetail on that concept, and I brought Mr. McCartney with us to help explain what we foresee as an implementation of a countywide stormwater management plan in the unincorporated areas in Lorraine County. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Brian McCartney.
Thanks, Ken, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Brian.
Morning, Brian.
As Ken said, my name's Brian McCartney, I'm with KEM and Associates Consulting Engineers. Our local office is located right here at 526 East Broad Street in downtown Alaria. And what I want to talk about is the implementation of a stormwater utility for the county. Some of the major challenges that we're faced with in, in Lorraine County and really across Ohio are new and mandated and unfunded EPA regulations, there's environmental concerns, we have flooding and drainage, including maintenance of storm sewers, ditches, development of retention, detention facilities, water pollution, the EPA requirement to remove stormwater from our sanitary sewer systems, or INI reduction. The lack of dedicated funding for these sources is a major, a major issue. The EPA regulations, which are the mandated and the unfunded regulations that I touched on earlier, the county and seven of our townships are under Phase II MS4 permits, and this is required by Ohio and the USA EPA. The townships that are included include Amherst, Carlisle, Columbia, Eaton, Alaria, Grafton, and Sheffield. The regulations cover six minimum control measures, these are required measures that have to take place. The public education and outreach, which is distributing educational materials and performing outreach to inform citizens about the impacts of polluted stormwater runoff. The public participation involvement, providing opportunities for citizens to participate in program development and implementation. Illicit discharge detection and elimination, developing and implementing a plan to detect and eliminate illicit discharges to the storm sewer system. Four, construction site runoff control, developing, implementing, and enforcing an erosion and sediment control program for construction activities. Five, post-construction runoff control, developing, implementing, and enforcing a program to address discharges of post-construction stormwater runoff. And six, pollution prevention and good housekeeping. This is developing and implementing a program with the goal of preventing or reducing pollute and runoff from county operations. Again, these are all required measures, and they are all unfunded. Flooding and drainage. As the county continues to grow, as commercial businesses develop, impervious areas increase, and essentially, the water gets to our rivers and our storm sewer systems quicker than what they did prior to development, the end result is flooding. Water pollution, the runoff creates river and lake pollution, sediments from new construction are an issue, chemicals from industrial and commercial sites, long chemicals and septic sewage from residential sites, these are all issues that have to be addressed. Inflow and infiltration. When the stormwater makes its way into our sanitary systems, the result is sanitary sewer overflows, which pollute our lakes and streams. The EPA requires that we remove stormwater from the sanitary sewer systems. So what are our options? The options to effectively manage all this work and to implement stormwater management for the county, you can either fund it through the general fund with...
That, that, that's a joke, right, Brian?
Well, that's, that is an option, but the reality is, with today's economy, there is no funding available for that. In the past, when issues came up related to stormwater, we were able to utilize general fund money, but that just simply is not a reality anymore. So the other option is to develop a stormwater district. This is permitted by Ohio Vice Code 6117. And what does the district do? It forms a dedicated funding source to handle these issues. The fee's based on contribution to runoff. The district may, may bill all of these, do the billing system through the county property taxes, so there's no new billing mechanism required. There's no new bureaucracy with this. County personnel will be utilized for steering and advisory committees, personnel from the county engineer's office and the commissioner's office, economic development, soil and water. You have a lot of gifted people that can form these committees, so there's no new bureaucracy going to be created. And it's a comprehensive watershed approach. It's where we can actually look at the county as a whole and make decisions on how we're going to implement stormwater management, which, which really needs to be done. Stormwater district, I just want to stress that this is a proven approach, we're not reinventing the wheel here. There's already 1,000 municipalities nationwide that have these. The, some of the Ohio counties that currently have them are Butler, Hamilton, Lake, Trumbull, and Warren, and as you're aware, every county, every year, more and more counties are adding these just because of the situation with general funds, they can't supplement stormwater anymore. Then there's more than 60 cities in Ohio, and also, these are increasing every year. What's the process? First, we implement $1.50 per month, which is $18 per year temporary fee for developed parcels, and all the unincorporated areas of the county cover all the EPA mandated activities. The EPA required INI reduction and all the startup costs to, to get the utility running. The startup will include the develop, development of their overall business plan, determine existing costs of service or steering and technical advisory committees that I touched on, determine required minimum cost of service to meet all the EPA regulations and drainage, and then public input's going to be key. As we move forward, this is just the very first meeting, but as we move forward over the next year, there's going to be multiple public meetings of this type where we're getting input from the public and make sure they understand what we're trying to get done as far as the utility's concerned. Determine the rate plan, implement a final billing structure over the year, and then once the county system's established, we've taken care of the issues in the county and we're up and running, then at that point, we can begin the process of working with municipalities and, and other incorporated areas of the county to see what their interest is in participating with our utility. The billing calculation, just so you understand, an equivalent residential unit, ERU, in Ohio, one ERU is roughly 4,000 to 6,000 square foot of impervious area, which is hard surface area, drives, buildings, anything that the water sheds off of quickly. If, when we take, when we get into delving and looking closer at all the impervious areas for development, say, the non-residential area, to give you an example, has a square footage of 12,000 square foot of impervious areas, so double, say, we make a standard of 6,000 square foot for one ERU, one residential unit, and we look in, we, when we look closely at the impervious areas, we'll see that the commercial development has 12,000 square feet, that would be equivalent to two ERUs. So if your initial rate is $1.50, they, they would be paying three. So if they have double the area, the bigger commercial businesses, they're going to pay their share of the cost. This is just an example of what, what I mean by hard surface area. It shows the rough areas, the parking lot, the driveways. We're, there's a lot of things that need to be worked out with the steering advisory committees as we move forward, because some of these commercial areas are, will already have their own retention facilities or detention facilities, and if that's the case, they should, we should consider credits, but the issue is, a lot of these, a lot of these facilities really aren't managed properly. Some of them become dumping grounds for grass clippings and what have you. So what we need to do is go out and look at each one of these, make sure they're actually working, they were installed the way they were designed, and they're working the way they're supposed to before any credits are given. Of course, this will all be discussion with the steering and the technical advisory committees, but we, we understand that there is some stormwater management that's out there already. The potential revenue, initially, the flat temporary fee across the board of $1.50 per month for all the developed properties in the unincorporated areas of the county will generate roughly $450,000 annually, and then once we get into, really, delving into the analysis of the, the impervious areas, like I said, the commercial areas will start paying a little more, so you will actually generate a little bit more in the future. What's the timeline to do this work? In April, we would ask that a work contract for cost of service analysis business plan be completed, bring your rate consultant on board, and start the hard work of implementing the utility. May through September, have your public involvement meetings, that'll be ongoing with flyers, brochures, public meetings. May to October, get your steering and technical advisory committees together, finalize your cost of service analysis, your business plan, your rate determination, final billing system implementation, and then in January 2011, the first bills will go out. And then in January 2011, the first bills will go out. So that's it. In closing, I want to thank you for your time. We'll try to do our best to answer, Ken and I, to answer general questions. But until the steering and technical advisory committees meet, we can't really give you anything as far as detail on what their plans would be. What I would do is write down those questions, take them to those committees, and then respond at future public hearings to any real detailed related question. Thank you.
Could we have copies of your presentation?
Sure.
Thank you. Jerry, you have a question?
Well, I would just like to add on to this. As you know, we've been struggling over the last couple of years with the requirements of the Clean Water Act and Phase Two in particular. If you recall, over the last couple of years, we've enacted legislation regarding the erosion sediment control and the post-construction. I know the Health Department, the Engineers Department, Nancy Funna at Soil and Water have been doing that educate, if you recall, the first screen with those six things we had to do. They've been doing a lot of that. As you also know, we're struggling to continue to fund that. We enacted all those things and now we somehow have to try to fund that. We recently received correspondence from the EPA that says that the next step in this process, the illicit discharge, is something that has to get done by July. And we're meeting with the Health Department, the townships, and so forth to come up with that. But once again, those are all unfunded mandates that somehow we are required by law to get done. And this is the one process that, as Brian mentioned, is being used throughout the state and throughout the nation as kind of an affordable and equitable way to try and do this. But again, I want to emphasize that a lot of this is being mandated to the localities.
Thank you Jerry.
Also, Shara Davis was facilitating the eighty thousand dollar grant that the Commissioners received on behalf of the Alliance, working with the mayors. And I emailed her yesterday about this meeting, she was not able to attend, but she let us know that Mayor Hunter and City Manager Eric Norberg wished to meet with the Commissioners to talk about how they might parallel this process. So there is interest, I believe the message that there was interest in partnering with us along this process.
I believe that's the intent. I think that's the intent, is to make it a countywide stormwater management plan to deal with the issues, be it from the southern part, unincorporated areas, to the northern part with municipalities. So I think moving forward on this, we'll take the EPA and stop them from getting on our backs. Is that correct Counselor?
Yeah, you know, again, this whole idea of stormwater management, stormwater doesn't go along defined geographic borders. So the best way to approach this is through a regional approach and combining with the other cities and so forth. And, you know, maybe if there's one upside to all the economic problems that we're having these days, the economic situation will force us as political subdivisions to work together because that's the only economic way that it's going to happen.
Thank you.
David, you have a comment?
Thank you Commissioners, David Ashenhurst of Oberlin. I'm certainly interested in how the Community Alliance's project and this work together. And I guess, just two things from the presentation, I hope it, we look very early. I noticed that of those five counties, I don't know the cities in those five counties, but I know that Cincinnati was on the municipalities list and Hamilton was on the counties list. So I don't know if that means that there's a system at, Hamilton County, I think, is mostly incorporated. So I assume that county plan, no, it's not.
Oh, they have some very large townships around there.
It depends on who already had a district established where you can go. So, you know, while it appears on the surface, very simple. Once you drill down through the issue, you'll find that if a political subdivision already had established a smaller district and procedures to deal with their stormwater, you cannot apply a district on top of that district. So sometimes you see this doing, it'll be very gerrymandered where a new district may go in in a collaborative effort and/or capturing some of the, most of the unincorporated areas. Some of the nuances is if there is incorporated areas that do not have a district, then a newly formed district can actually go into those areas. So it's a bit more complicated.
Well, since none of us have districts already.
Right.
We could make this countywide.
I think the intent is, as the Board has indicated and as Commissioner Blair Reifley indicated, that once we have more clarification and we've spent the next several months working out issues, as Mr. McCartney had indicated, that we need to do through technical and steering committees and we have a clear line of sight to where we're going. I think the objective of the Board's been all along is to work with the people that are already establishing some procedures and working relationships and bring them all into the same room. We just got to get things moving right now and we're just starting. So it's hard to sit down and discuss overall objectives when we haven't even established any objectives really yet, other than to deal with some of those things that Mr. Ennis spoke with, which are the unfunded mandates and some of the problems that present themselves very quickly. But those are easy to remedy, it's the deeper problems that we have to spend some time formulating a plan for.
Thank you. I guess I also wondered how this fee, this temporary fee that's, the bills will go out in January 2011, that's on a fee, but if this is going to be added to the property taxes, there sometime has to be a vote on it, doesn't there?
Well, actually, on an assessment and on tax duplicate, you would need to do those type of public hearings before you assess property. This is an assessment, this is simply a fee and the order is allowed to collect certain fees with the issuance of the tax duplicates. And this is one of the things that he has worked with us as a partner so that we didn't have to go outside and spend taxpayers' money to try to collect fees because those duplicates are going out anyway. And Mr. Ennis can probably speak more clearly to that because he did the legal research on this.
David, that goes back to what I was talking about, the EPA. There is, when we are taking steps to comply with EPA Phase Two Clean Water Act mandates, there is a special section in the code that allows that to be directly sent out with the tax bill.
I just, it's interesting because I sort of hope that municipalities can bank the money. I mean, you know, the fee ought to go on developed parcels in the incorporated areas as well and just pile that money up until these things come together. That would be a good idea, it seems to me.
Well, one of the problems we're facing now is we have a ton of work to do and we don't have the money to start it. It's chicken and egg here.
Right.
So one of the difficulties we're facing right now is finding money to get ready to do some of these things that allow us to collect the fees. And we're scrambling because we need to have certain things done even before we can go on the tax duplicate and we're trying to find those resources. So collecting money and stockpiling will never be our problem. A shortage will be our problem with regard to moving forward, especially in the first year of the program. And, you know, right now, I'm trying to figure out on behalf of the Board what to recommend to them as far as where we're going to get the money to move the project forward so that we can prepare for early next year.
Okay, I'm sorry that Shara couldn't be here today because I know that that discussion has gone pretty far in that thing and I would have been interested in what she'd do.
It'll be ongoing.
Yes.
The Alliance's August meeting will also feature a discussion on stormwater. And I see Joe Wright is in the audience from Avon Lake. Joe, do you have any comments? Your city is probably a forerunner on this issue. Did you bring your little animal today?
Thank you Commissioners for giving me the opportunity. As you can see by my presence, I am very interested in this from my own municipality and the direction that we've taken as far as working together on something from the county level. It is, it's a burden for all of us. My, the administration within the city council and the mayor is interested from Avon Lake's standpoint. They do have a limited budget set aside for me to do and I try to do as much as I can for it. But I agree as far as working on a collaborative effort around the county. It is tough. I have regular conversations with EPA about ongoing issues and I totally agree that there's lots of projects across the county that doesn't follow corporate boundaries. So I'm very interested in, I would be more than happy to talk to the Commissioners or talk to any of the committee. I've worked with Shara for the grants and so forth. So I will plan to be hopefully able to put some input into that, so thank you.
Joe, how is it going so far with the committee on the incorporated areas?
It's still an ongoing thing. Right now, Shara's submitted the grant and now we're hoping to get some kind of response back because that's looking at a grant for the implementation, the same thing as Mr. Kearney's office is looking into. So, but because it's going to be dealing more with municipalities as well as with the unincorporated areas, there's a lot of discussion. I mean, there's a whole lot of discussion that has to go on to talk municipalities. And we have several municipalities that already have utilities in place. You know, Avon Lake has talked about it, but ours never got, we never got beyond it because budget constraints through council has limited what I could do. We got to the point of our qualification statements, we have affirmed to go and look at our city to study it, but, you know, that was 2008 and we just never had the money to go forward with the next phase of it, so.
Your utilities corporation, because you guys have a separate utilities corporation with elected members, they don't have money in their budget to pay for the study to...
They handle only sanitary and water.
Okay, alright.
So the storm falls on me.
Okay.
They pay you to take it and I have to figure out how to take it back from them for the stormwater. For free, yes.
Well, just asking the questions because every community operates a little bit differently.
Yeah, that's a different one, which is some logistics within our own city to go forward too, so.
Well, I'm just wondering, is this already in litigation? Because I'm looking at an article from Crane's Magazine in February where it says, "The Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is seeking to impose a fee on property owners in fifty communities in Cuyahoga County and eleven towns in Lorraine and Summit County." So how is their role, is it gonna, I mean, are we working together with them or are they...
Well, you know Commissioners, as we've talked over the months, if you remember, there's a number of legal challenges to a lot of these communities around Ohio. We get more news from Cuyahoga because they're so close to us. We actually did have some input with regard to Columbia Township and how they were going to be treated with, since we were moving forward with our own project. Mr. Ennis worked on that with them, but there are a number of legal challenges that may come our way with regard to how we're dealing with this.
But they're getting fees from Lorraine County and we're going to impose, are we both going to be imposing the same fees on the same people?
My understanding is that we were close to resolving that issue.
Well, we have been, excuse me, we have been working with Neo-Sword for quite some time. Mr. Kearney's office and Columbia Township officials have been meeting with them. And I think we were fairly close to working toward a resolution. However, they, they are a district, maybe if I backtrack a little bit. We have what has always been called the Lorraine County Sanitary District, which has been in existence since when Ken, in nineteen...
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. We've called it the Sanitary District because through the eighties and nineties, it's always been dealing with sewers, but it is actually a sanitary and stormwater district. So we've always had that authority there. But that's, that's one statutory entity that covers the unincorporated areas. Neo-Sword is an area, is a different type of organization that covers both municipalities and certain townships and unincorporated areas. So that's why you have that overlap. And the municipal, just like Joe has indicated here, the municipalities in Cuyahoga County have done a lot of stormwater management on their own already and now they're upset that now they're being doubled up there. That's why we're trying to work it out. So we're going into the unincorporated areas where there isn't anything. If we do this merged thing, we would have to form a new district with the municipalities. So that's how all that works. But yeah, Columbia Township is a unique thing because we have a, we're in Neo-Sword because of a contract. And we were trying to work it out and discuss it with them, but now we are in the middle of all that litigation. I have continued to indicate to them that, you know, we want to sit down and work this out cooperatively with them, but we have emphasized to them, we've got to do something to avoid this double fee thing on our Columbia Township residents.
And on top of that, given the topography over in Columbia Township and how the stormwater goes, it actually, some of it goes into Bediner and into Cuyahoga County. So there's issues there with regard to what we do here and how we deal with them over there and how that affects them. I know Ken's been on top of that. We have time, that's another one of those issues that we need to work out as we're moving through the rest of this year. So I think what we can do is report back to you on that as we move forward. I know the goal that the Board has explained to us is ultimately you do not want anybody double built. So we have to work out a resolution for the bills go out.
Joe, you had a comment?
I wanted to say too, just for the Commissioners' benefit, the Northeast Ohio Sewer District, their bills are going to hit the mailboxes June and July. And they've got a lot of input in residents and municipalities that are objecting to it. But we're going to learn from what they're learning because...
Sometimes it's nice to have somebody else first.
We're following just behind them, but, you know, considering the amount of carriers that they have or the people that they're going to impact, yeah, you're going to see a lot of...
And I think Jerry explained it, you know, pretty matter of fact, right where it needed to be. There was a lot of municipalities doing their own thing and Neo-Sword came in and imposed themselves on top of them. We didn't do that here. So that's, I want to say that's one mistake that we watched and learned from. And, you know, possibly had they sat down and respected the integrity of the processes that were already in place, they may not have gone down this road. I really don't know, but I know we're not going down that road.
Yeah, the sewer district, if I can finish, the sewer district's idea is if they're taking the sanitary, you're going to pay for the storm also. So that's how their jurisdictions are and it's a tough one, so thank you.
What complicates it there Commissioners, again, we talked about watersheds could go over political boundaries and the watershed from, which one is that Ken? The watershed that comes from Cuyahoga down into Columbia?
Rocky River.
Rocky River. So that one, that's why, you know, you have to try and work coordination out because if they're going to deal with the Rocky River watershed in Cuyahoga County, somehow that's got a segue into where it comes into Lorraine County.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I thought what we were going to talk about today too was the resolution that we passed, was it at the end of last year or the beginning of this year? And are those bills going out now or...
Which resolution was that Commissioner?
Well, I kind of thought it was this one. There were so many brought to us all at one time. The one that's going to pay for the grant money for Obama, the 1.8 million.
You're talking about the stimulus money in the low interest loan?
Right.
I didn't think we were going to, we were going to do stormwater, but we're prepared to talk about anything you want to.
Well, while Brian's here, maybe we can talk about that too.
Well, do we have any specific discussion points on it? I'm sure, well, I know we can answer the questions. We, it has to do with stormwater infiltration into the sanitary system.
Did we send letters out to inform the people that are going to be affected by that, that this is coming and why it's coming?
The direction that I received last week was executed last week. We, right after the meeting, when I spoke to each Commissioner, I sent a direction out to the sanitary engineers department to get the letters on the street immediately with regard to fee structure and what we were doing with it. So I got a reply back that that was being done. And I see Mr. Kearney shaking his head, yes. So if you want to talk about that, we're ready.
I think we should explain why we are sending letters out and why there's a new fee being imposed on people and some of it's going to increase their bills and some of it's going to decrease other people's bills, correct? Can we, do we, we want to discuss that today?
Sure. I don't, we're ready.
Okay.
Yes Commissioners, that resolution was passed in November. But the process is, county sanitary engineer would like to notify all the affected trustees. prior to notifying any particular residences. So, we have plans on mailing that out tomorrow morning
Oh.
to all the affected townships and their trustees and their fiscal officers. So, we can receive some input from those individuals. And then later, we'd like to send the letters out, notifications, after we meet with the townships and hear from them. The trustees, I should say, to notify the property owners of any increases they would expect.
Or decreases.
Based on the resolution.
Correct? Or decreases.
I'm sorry, again?
Or decreases. Some people's bills will go down, some people's bills will go up?
That is true.
Okay.
Commissioner, let me take a stab at this, what you're trying, I think you want to, you want to hear. Over the last several years, we have undertaken several very large construction projects by the demand of the Ohio EPA to resolve problems that are small package plants. That I think we're in the neighborhood of about 1,400 users, Ken, does that sound about right?
Twenty.
Yes.
And also to deal with fines that the EPA was leveraging, levaging, excuse me, levying on us predate this board significantly. I'm pleased to say that we did do all those projects. We did reduce the overall EPA fine down to a manageable level, very, very significant. And when we completed those projects, they obviously had to be paid for. They, some of them were by assessments, that we had assessment hearings from, some were by fees. Some of them, we had clearly not completely established what we were going to do, but we were under orders and findings by the EPA to get the work done or shut down. So, we moved forward. This year, last year, while we were doing a lot of other things, because of the difficulties, challenges and that we were facing in the county, we also had to start paying for these things because we were in construction notes and we had to go to bond. So, all of that work was incorporated into one jumbo bond. And for the first time since we've been in the sanitary sewer district business, Lorraine County has been, I should say, we went to one flat fee. Didn't mean to choke you up, Commissioner. We went to one, one standard flat fee for all users within the district, which is similar to what municipalities usually do for their services within their jurisdictions. In addition to that, there was the availability of about 1.6 million dollars of stimulus money.
One point eight.
One point eight.
Free and 1.8 that we have to borrow.
Okay. Again, I'm pulling these off the top of my head, that we, we were able to get access to for the residents here at no cost to them. That wasn't enough to do the complete project on all the existing infrastructure in the sewer district. And there was a low interest loan that was brought in at about 3%.
Three point four three. Look at my cheat sheet.
Okay, 3.4%. Again, I'm rounding this off to do the second, you know, to bring it all together, have enough money to do that huge project with regard to our complete sewer, sewer district. I think that's where you may have been going with regard to how that fee was established for all the users that are currently on the system.
And their bills will be, this will be reflected in their bills when?
Beginning April 1st.
Of this year.
Oh, of this year.
Of this year.
That's why I'm, I thought we wanted to bring this out so that people will be aware of this and not be surprised. That's what I thought. When I saw this on the agenda, that's kind of what I thought. Because storm, I guess, stormwater and sanitary, and this has all kind of been wrapped up into one big thing. And I think we need to separate it out and make everybody aware of what's happening.
I can see we had a bit of confusion here, but I hope I provided the information that with regard to the sanitary end of that, that is satisfactory. There's more that we need to put out there, I'm sure we can.
My concern is if we pass this way back in November and the people are going to get their bills like tomorrow and nothing's been explained until the day before, it's just, the timing is not, not right.
Correct. Would it be easier for Brian or Ken to explain the rate structure that you came up with for the cost for the fees? To repay you guys the big bucks for?
Brian may develop a response of a more intricate nature, but I wanted to say that this will not be given in terms of any billing since our billing is every two months. So, we're looking at no, no earlier than May, the middle of May.
May?
Every two months we bill. We've been postponing that until May and...
It was, my understanding was we're sending the letters out, letting them know that that's going to be on their May bill beginning April 1st, that they're going to be charged that beginning April 1st.
Absolutely.
You know, one of the problems, and I can appreciate your frustration here, Commissioner, because we were actually supposed to start collecting January 1st. But because of different scenarios and issues that were being dealt with, there was some confusion on stormwater, sanitary, this letter, that letter, and some things that were, some of us thought were being accomplished were not. And there was a lot of confusion. And that leaves us some problem with covering shortages on, on our bond issue that I need to deal with on behalf of you and make recommendations, so I...
Because we were already having to pay debt service on this and we don't have any income coming in for the debt service, correct?
Correct.
And the amount of what, 100, 200,000?
Well, right now, we would have collected about an additional $67,000. And because we have some safeguards built and I, I think we may get pretty close to getting by, but I'm not completely sure yet. I have to wait and see what the collections look like later in the year. I'll have to come back and brief you at that point. It's, we have to, we have to see what comes in on the duplicate and what's paid and what we have. But this got, this got lost in a lot of other issues, there's no doubt about that. I think a couple of us were surprised at this when we, when we talked a week ago.
The current plan right now, just so you clearly understand, is to notify the trustees 1st of April and then notify all the residents the week after that. We want to try to give everybody roughly a month to look at this, to talk about it, call in Mr. Carney's office so that we can, you know, just tell them exactly what this is for and why we're doing it. And the letters clearly explain all that. So, we're giving roughly a month before we actually implement the billing, which will be May 1st. And as Mr. Cordez stated, what we did, we had a multitude of projects that were completed and they've been done, we're wrapping that all together into one, one bond. And then we're just taking care of that and having one utility fee for the district. So, and we're going to inform everybody of exactly what that's for.
So, everyone will basically pay the same fee going forward instead of having different fees around our district?
Essentially, yes, yep.
Because these are the ones that way back when the sewer was completed, they were being assessed on the cost of that sewer.
Right.
So, the older sewer, people with older sewers were being charged a lot less and people that were paying for new sewers because they cost more later on.
Right.
But the older sewers are the ones that probably are going to be needing repairs because they're old, right? So, it didn't really make any sense that people with older sewers were being charged less than people with new sewers.
Well, my understanding, Commissioner, though, is prior boards had never enacted fee increases, correct, Mr. Carney?
Right.
Even the sanitary engineer. So, what we ended up doing was bundling up, because we had so many repairs and EPA fines that we had to deal with. And then we had to take it all to bond. And then there's one aggregated rate that's amortized over the entire district.
Alright. Once this is done, the department, yeah, once this is done, the department will be solvent. The utility increases that are implemented, the debt fee service, everything that's being taken care of here in one shot will make the department solvent.
And we'll be able to move forward with keeping our repairs up to date and not having issues.
Right.
Like we've had in the past, correct?
Right.
Our package plants and everything else will stay up to date. We won't have the EPA in here looking to find us and...
Right.
We have, we have what we believe is sufficient M&amp;R, maintenance and repair funds built into the fee. That's another new thing. And generally speaking, Commissioner Kelo, you're very accurate indicating that we were doing a lot of maintenance on older sewers and Commissioner Kogoski, while newer sewers cost more, they were paying more. But most of the work by the department was being done on the older facilities and it didn't make sense that they were paying less. When you, when you form a district, when, it's a co-op, it's a commune. And, you know, everybody, sometimes you benefit from a project, sometimes other people benefit from the project. But that, that fee needs to be level across the whole playing field so that everybody's receiving benefits.
What's the new fee going to be per household? Do we have that as a fixed number? I don't have my paperwork here with me because I didn't see it on the agenda, so I wasn't dealing with that.
Yes, per ordinance, Commissioner, the...
Per resolution?
Fee with all debt paid. And remember, we have extensive debts over the years of non-activity, non-revenue, non-development. But, and more importantly, the annual debt is still there on an annual basis and it continues to perpetuate. But the, the reserve that we, that Mr. Cordez has talked about, which would be a dollar forty-five cents, would initiate the O M&amp;R monies that we would utilize to maintain all future repairs and any surprises that could happen at that point. But at this point, it's nine dollars per month.
Nine dollars a month.
Yes.
And is that, does that cover the 1.8 million dollar Obama money also? Is that part of that, nine dollars?
No. That's 2.75.
That was the whole stormwater management.
That's the stormwater management one?
Right, that's why you're confusing between the two, stormwater. We did stormwater. 1.8 million, we did stormwater in the first discussion.
That's...
That was the fee of a dollar fifty a month that'll go on the tax duplicate.
Okay.
It's a stormwater project, it's an INI.
Right.
And I think you're...
I'm combining the two, but I'm sorry about that.
Well, you're absolutely correct. There is a small combination. The INI reduction is storm sewer removal from a sanitary sewer system.
Right.
I can see the connection, but the INI is a separate fee of one dollar fifty cents. And there is also additional reserve money in that dollar and a half, believe it or not, that could give us seed money to...
Future match money for another grant?
Eighty percent, I can get you eight dollars for two dollars.
So, a retention area capability and such to stop...
Absolutely.
The infiltration of the stormwater.
Time to attack the grants while they're still here.
Do you have your paperwork in front of you?
Excuse me?
Do you have your paperwork in front of you?
Looks like it.
Well, I got some in front of me and it doesn't jive with the amounts that you just mentioned. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, I was quoting the ordinance, the resolution.
Thank you. Well, I, my paperwork here, an option A3 talks about a nineteen dollar per month fee plus two dollars and seventy-five cents to take care of the Obama money. Now, I don't know where you came up with nine dollars, Ken.
That would be option E, resolution 09, 810.
I got A3.
You had too many, too many things going at one time.
Don't. She doesn't have that paperwork, can't...
Well, you don't have to give it to me then.
Well, you got it from our past.
No, that's the investment advisory committee.
I guess, Ken, I guess, I guess the question I would believe gives clarity to everybody is, how much is the county imposing as our own fee all in on any user? I know we pay some upcharges that go into some of the treatment facilities that we can't control that. And that's allowed. But how much do, does a person pay, each person will now pay for strictly the county portion of what we're doing?
Strictly the county portion for sanitary sewer customers over 3,100 would be nine dollars per month.
Okay. Now, that, that's the county portion.
And that's collected, like if they, if they're in Lorraine and they get a Lorraine bill, it's collected in a Lorraine bill or is it, how is this going to be collected?
We'll be doing our own billing, 3,102 customers.
Paper billing or is this going to go on the tax duplicate too?
Paper billing.
Paper billing?
Every two months.
Every two months?
And we're hopefully expecting mid-May for the first one.
Which we currently do also.
We currently do our own billing for our own customers. We've adopted the other customers that utilize our sewers, our laterals, and we're taking over that billing also. All billing is going to be in one department.
What goes on to the tax duplicate of those delinquent accounts?
Absolutely.
That is certified to the auditor on an annual basis for collection, so...
Only delinquencies.
Correct, ma'am.
I have more paperwork that has the nine dollar fee. I have lots of paperwork. I'm glad you brought it all.
Well, I think, I think a little of the confusion on the fee and the reason I asked Ken that question straight up was that is not, and I don't want to give, you know, eighty percent of the residents in Lorraine County live in municipalities and covered by sanitary departments and municipalities. We're all in the pressure that the people in our system are only paying nine dollars a month. That's the county's portion of their bill. They also pay a bill for treatment services to wherever they are connected to, whatever wastewater system they're connected to, it could be, it could be Alaria, it could be Lorraine.
Or they could have a septic system.
Well, yes, the septic system is, they don't pay anybody for but themselves. But, but, and we have arrangements with Grafton and Alaria, Lorraine, Wellington. So, we're going to get nine dollars and then the rest of their bill is going to go to that treatment facility, wherever it's located at. And that, so if, when, when somebody runs down and says, "How come the county people aren't paying nine dollars and I'm paying 56?" Our people aren't just paying nine dollars, but that's what the county portion is to them.
Ken, when you send those letters out to the townships, et cetera, will you see that the commissioners are copied? Please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I will, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. And thank both you and Brian for your attendance today on this very timely subject. Okay, we done with that? All questions answered? Alright.
I don't know, we'll find out. Next week I might have some more, hopefully you're here.
Well, I think that the subject's never going to go away, but we did adopt a resolution and the resolution contained the amounts that were appropriate, even though my paperwork doesn't necessarily contain them. I wanted to go back to item number F, which is the commissioners' report because we haven't heard from the commissioners yet.
Sure you want to?
Well, don't, don't open that door and then I won't answer. It's your turn.
I'll go first, I guess. Yesterday, was it, my assistant, myself and Karen Davis took a few tours around the county. We went and saw the transit maintenance facility and the new collection center that should be opening hopefully in around June or so. Still has a few issues to get finished over there, but I think it'll be a good thing for, for the county. And we also toured the train station, which has not been one of my favorite things. As long as there was no general fund money going to it, I'm okay with it. And there's been a lot of good work done over there, so I was impressed and I love old buildings and they did, they did a nice job. And there's still busy, like beavers over there working when we were there, was it yesterday or the day before yesterday? Yesterday. And that's the end of my report.
I understand you weren't too enamored with the color selection for the sewer.
No, it kind of looked like a Christmasy Ohio State looking theme. I don't know, it was too gaudy of colors for me. I would have picked something...
Scarlet and bright?
It was, no, it wasn't. It was red and green.
He's just rolling around in his grave.
No, I love Ohio State. I'm saying it's like, it was, it looks like big red Os with green around it. I don't know, it looked like Christmas Ohio State mixed together.
The reason I, the reason I brought it up is I explained to you and some people that have seen it and wondered too, when you're restoring a building like this to historical significance, you're forced into certain decision-making and these are the colors and the motifs that were originally in, in these type of facilities. And while the work is very ornate and beautiful, sometimes I wonder about the colors myself. But it is what it is, Commissioner, sorry.
And I was thinking, the TV screens there, we might have wanted to get even bigger ones. I mean, everybody makes a big deal out of big, flat screen TVs and things, but that room is so massive and huge. If it wasn't for the projector that they have up there, the TV screens might be too small.
I'm hopeful and, and I hope they're large enough because one of the things with that room, the challenges were to make it into a usable space with modern technology while maintaining the historical significance of the structure. And because of limitations on cabling and cableways, so we, we had to be very innovative on how we did that. I think later this year, we're going to see ribbon cutting on that facility and we may do some pre-tours on it. But as you've seen, it's going to be a great meeting space. It's going to offer the second largest space, a third, excuse me, outside of the Palace Theater and Spitzer Conference Center for large groups to meet and have better state-of-the-art technology.
There's only 200 and some that could fit in there, I thought.
Well, the biggest place is the Palace followed by Spitzer, that's about 300. I'm not too aware of too many places.
The Palace is 1,300 seats.
Is it 13 or is it 5?
No, 1,300 seats at the Palace Civic Center.
I forgot you were on the board. I forgot you were on the board.
Yeah, he knows.
I'm not aware of too many places that'll offer that kind of meeting facilities, other than Banquet Hall, that will hold for, you know, business meetings and things like that. I think we're about two, two-forty, and we have all the technology to support doing presentations and so forth. So it's going to be very exciting.
Oh, we also went down on Washington Avenue and clocked how far of a walk it is from there to the Justice Center, and it was three-tenths of a mile. But it's mostly going uphill.
You didn't take your little walking
No, I didn't walk it, I did it in my car.
What a gal. Wow.
I didn't want to walk it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect anybody else to walk it. I'd like to see the jury bus back, thank you very much. Okay. End of my report.
Oh, Commissioner Kayla will save us.
Yeah, okay. Monday morning, I was invited to attend a press conference at Great Lakes Science Center. Governor Strickland, Senator Sherrod Brown, Prosecutor Mason from Cuyahoga County, President Barb Snyder, Case Western Reserve University, N R G Corporation, and Richard Stube from Leadco, forming Great Lakes Energy Development Task Force, with some major announcements with the Offshore Wind Group that Lorraine County is a part of as of last year. Leadco is going out for RFPs for design of offshore wind turbines to get the preliminary cost and siting issues discussed. Senator Sherrod Brown is working on his power act in Congress to lower the fees and costs of putting up alternative energy, whether it be solar and/or wind. And Governor Strickland is pushing through our state legislature, the state senate, and the state house, legislation lowering the personal tangible property tax on renewables, also wind and solar. The state of Ohio is heavily taxed on those issues. The normal cost for one megawatt of solar is about a hundred thousand dollars in fees, and about forty thousand dollars for one megawatt of wind. We hope to get competitive between six and ten thousand dollars per one megawatt, like our surrounding states. So it's nice that everybody's working cooperatively, and it's nice to be part of that group out of Cuyahoga, working regionally. They were meeting with the Ash Tabula County Commissioners and Chamber on Tuesday to discuss them joining. And I have had conversations with Erie County Commissioner Shinago, and, well, I forgot Bill's last name. That's bad, I actually saw
Well, and then you were going to ask me, and I'm
But two commissioners from Erie County who are actually interested in joining the group also. So it's moving forward. Who thought five years ago we'd actually be talking seriously about offshore wind? So very good day. So thank you very much, end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla. Saturday night, I attended the four-H fundraiser. Because of our reduced funding here at the county, we've had to reduce their funds, and they had a very successful, although I can't give you a dollar amount fundraiser to supplement their income there. And it was, it was wonderful. And they did a yeoman's job in getting people and getting donations, and then getting people to bid on those donations. I bought a ninety-dollar elderberry pie. I'm serving it for Thanksgiving. Very small piece.
Pretty good.
In Thanksgiving? You're saving it for Thanksgiving?
Oh, no, I'm sure, Easter. I get confused. It's in the freezer. I, I just put it right there so nobody would eat it before, uh, Easter. I guess when you get older, you get confused more frequently. Our alliance meeting was Friday. It was our Lorraine County Transportation Day, and we had a, I think, a very successful transportation day. There were about seventy people in attendance. And we've already received a couple of plaudits about the availability of the various kinds of transportation initiatives being in the same room. I want to again thank Ken Carney, our county engineer, for providing refreshments. And it, the, the meeting will be broadcast on the College Channel Saturday at eleven P M. And Sunday at three and eleven P M. And I will let you know when it will be broadcast on our Lorraine County Community Alliance website. The times have not been established yet, but I think it was, it was great. So thank you. And is there anyone who wishes to speak publicly? I move the reading be waived of the
Board correspondent?
Board correspondent.
Second.
That was a tie. Yeah.
I'll let him have it. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla. Ms. Kokowski.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Oh, I thought you were waiving me. I didn't
Not a chance.
When I prepared to make this announcement earlier this morning, I didn't realize this would be proclaimed Child Abuse Month, and that there was an increase in child abuse cases. Well, there also has been an increase in juvenile crime cases. And I wanted to announce that there will be a meeting in Oberlin called Order in the Court Reforming Juvenile Justice, and it will be on Sunday, April the eighteenth, at two P M. In Wilder Hall on the Oberlin College Campus on West Lorraine Street. When I pulled out my tablet this morning to take notes, I discovered I had on top some from Judge Bezinski and Doug Messer last year. They also reported three important things. One was the juvenile filings were up twenty percent in Lorraine County for the first half of last year, that the neglect, neglect and abuse cases were up ten percent at that time, and that they were very concerned about the fact that attorney fees are low in this county so that juveniles do not often always get adequate representation. And those are some of the things that will be mentioned in this talk. So I, I think everybody should be informed on this subject. So I hope people will turn up for the meeting. Mr. Christopher Mallett will be the speaker. He's the professor at Cleveland State University and a juvenile justice advocate.
Thank you, Shirley.
Hi, Rick Crowe from Captain Ohio. I've got some concerns about the solid waste problem we got here. As I understand it, several local providers aren't allowed to dump at the county facility at this point. I'm not sure, can anybody explain why that is? I know there was somebody in here
What was your specific question, sir?
Some of the, some of the local providers, you know, who, garbage haulers aren't allowed to dump here at the facility. They have to go
Well, you know, I, I actually see our people from BF, well, Allied Waste, sitting in the back of the room. They may be better positioned to answer that question.
It's nice of you to attend our meetings and answer questions for us.
I thought I was going to get out easy today, but I guess
You're just staying for the cake, Dave.
Did you hear the question, David?
You're just staying for the cake.
I'd be happy to. Thanks for the invite. Actually, anybody is welcome, any hauler is welcome to dump at that facility. There's posted gate rates, and there, there's nobody that's restricted from dumping at that facility as long as they pay the posted gate rate.
Okay, it seems, I remember about a year ago, some people coming in here complaining because they had to go out of the county to, to do the dumping. I guess, I don't know all the
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad Dave Kidder was here. And they're the managers of the facility, and those are the, those are the people that are controlling the keys to the kingdom. So if he's saying that it's, that's not so, I guess we don't have any other information going on.
Okay.
Thank you.
I love your shirt, by the way.
Anybody else? If not, I move we adjourn into executive session for the purposes outlined. And I'm glad to see Commissioner Corey here to acknowledge, former Commissioner Corey, to acknowledge his former administrative assistant, who will be cutting the cake in five minutes. You going to stay or you going to second?
I didn't know if she was going to second it this time.
You two ought to get together.
I'll second.
All right.
Discussion, Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
All right.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for printable copy of the agenda.
On April first, 2010, our nation will be counted. Every person, whoever they are, wherever they live. And what we learn will transform what we know about ourselves. The 2010 Census, it's a new portrait of America. The 2010 Census is an exciting milestone for America. It promises to deliver accurate information about our diverse and growing population. And it's important for the future of every community. Census data will be used to allocate over three-hundred billion dollars in federal funds every year.
The 2010 Census will be important to the nation because it is the foundation of our democracy.
The census, no matter when it is, is a consummate partnership between local, state, and federal government.
Communities use the data to plan for their future, like disaster and emergency services, healthcare services, schools, transportation, libraries, senior centers, and more. The 2010 Census builds on the success of previous censuses, and is the best-planned and most well-researched census ever. And innovations, like a new short census form, will help to make it even more successful. The 2010 Census, it's easy to complete. Data are always confidential and safeguarded. It's important.
This census is a commitment to the American way of life. To be counted as a resident of the United States, I think, is one of the proudest things that can happen to you in this country. It's important, stand up for yourself, be counted, let people know you're out there.
The 2010 Census, it's a new portrait of America. The 2010 Census, it's a new portrait of America.